Good evening, everyone. The time is 6:00 PM. Calling this meeting to order, the Monday, April 10th, meeting of the Marquette City Commission. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And City Clerk, if we can get a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Otteway?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protam Davis?
Here.
And Mayor Mayor.
Here. Commissioners, can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Smith? Mayor Protam Davis?
I move we excuse Commissioner Smith due to personal reasons.
Do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Otteway?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Brings us to approval of the agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion on agenda? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to approve the agenda as written.
Thank you. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Larson?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, that brings us to announcements. I have none for this evening. For boards and committees, we have one appointment this evening. Commissioners, do we have a motion on the appointment? Mayor Protam Davis?
I move we appoint Richard Brebner Derby to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending 6/1/23 and a subsequent term ending 6/1/26.
Thank you. Do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Hanley?
I second that.
Any discussion?
I'm just happy to see people getting involved with the city committees, and I'd like to see more, so we have all filled committees this year.
All right. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, that brings us to our first public comment session of the evening. As a reminder, the public comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when giving comment, and just feel free to approach the center podium.
Margaret Rum, 404 East Magnetic Street, and I'm going to surprise you tonight, but that's okay. Here's an update on the underwater lighting for the pier project. Three strings of lights have been purchased with my money. They have been tested in my backyard for the past week under different weather conditions, and I have security cameras back there showing them blinking for hours at a time. So I verified that they came out of the box and they worked. One of the things that I've been challenged by is that they're multi-colored, and somebody suggested that the harbor might do better with a white light. So I purchased four additional solar-powered white lights. They'll be arriving this week, they'll be tested, and I expect to get them to Don Fosbender by the end of the month, and then he will go offline with the Harbor Master and John Swenson and figure out how to put them in place underneath the piers as much as they can be used. So I just wanted to give you an update on that, and the fact that I'm taking the time to test them so that they don't get hooked up underwater and then they don't work. I'm very much looking forward to this. It actually brings a smile to my face when I look in the backyard and these lights are blinking away. The second thing I have to say is a little bit unusual, but I figured since everybody in town is watching this, I might as well ask. The Presbyterian Book Sale is coming up. It's the end of the month, it's very popular, there's drop-off bins everywhere. I am looking for additional copies of the book Unsafe at Any Speed by Ralph Nader. It is out of print, I can't find it. I'm assigning it as extra credit for my students, there's only two copies on reserve. So if you're going to donate to the Presbyterian Book Sale, contact me, I will pay them a fortune for your book to get it as soon as possible, and I apologize, I don't mean to turn public comment into a garage sale, however, I figured it was the best way I could find to, there's copies of this all over, it's just people don't know how valuable it is. So to sum up, the lights have been ordered, they've been tested, they're coming, and they'll go to the Harbor Master very soon for deployment, and I'm looking for Unsafe at Any Speed, and I'm finished before three minutes. That was a big surprise tonight. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, Iris Katers, 15 Sprecher Circle in Marquette. And in 1999, I was a member of the Board of Directors for the 150th anniversary of the founding of Marquette, and I saw an article in the paper that Ishpeming is going to be celebrating their 175th year, and that reminded me that Marquette might want to do the same thing. As part of our report, I dug up the sesquicentennial report, and I think I should get a gold star for having this for 25 years. And so we have so many organizations, so many great projects going on, and there are organizations that I think that this wouldn't be too hard to do because we already have all these wonderful things going on in Marquette, and we just put an umbrella over it, calling it the 175th anniversary. So as you see from this booklet that I'm going to give you tonight off my bookshelf, we did an amazing number of things. Thousands of children and adults did things, and we had a big project, which was to build the new pavilion on Presque Isle. That's how that happened. And also, we have a time capsule buried on Presque Isle that we promised the students we'd open up with all their drawings, all their predictions for the future, 25 years from now. People wrote songs, they presented them, created artwork, had programs at the History Museum. It was really kind of an old-fashioned kind of celebration that you would expect, like in the 1890s or something. We decorated windows, designed posters, buttons, decorated bicycles, had dog dashes, special fireworks that year, special floats. Mary Wright organized a unique heritage family tree project, and as one of the few remaining members of the sesquicentennial board, I get to pass it on to all of you. And hopefully that you can get a committee together of people who love Marquette, and it really was great fun, and the kids were involved in making videos that year, and they won awards for that from National Geographic Magazine. And the least that we can do is to open up that time capsule on Presque Isle that Mark Canali donated. So it was great fun, and so I pass this on to you, and it's really very complete, how much money we spent, everybody who participated. So, good luck.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment this evening?
Hello, Barb Altai, 1324 North Front. I'm here tonight to publicly recognize my amazing neighbors who have managed to keep the sidewalk open between Front and Pine all winter long, in spite of the aggressive plumbing strategies. And I literally, I don't know if you are aware, I mean, I'm sure you're aware, I've addressed this, I've gotten, you know, I'm sort of the, you know, but you know, the way that it's set up on East Fair is it's a very narrow median, it's plowed, you know, frequently, snow goes into the sidewalks, we, you know, but anyway, in spite of all this, our block has literally been open all winter long, and I think it's important to, you know, kind of recognize the people that have been doing that, and I'm going to point that out because this is public comment. So specifically, I'd like to recognize Lou Green, who lives on North Front Street. He plows pretty much the entire block between East K or K and Front, or K and Fair. And then I'd like to recognize Mike Smith, who's on the corner of High and East Fair. He actually is over there at times chopping out the berm across the street, because as you know, the sidewalk plow is on the north side of Fair, you know, you can't get to it because of the berm, so Mike's over there chopping out the berm so that people can get up to that sidewalk. And Kevin Carr, who is my neighbor, who does an amazing job, he's going to kill me for mentioning his name. John Tavernini also, but anyway, these are the people, and myself. You know, we live, we live in a spot that is hard to keep open, and you know, if you look at Block Proceeding and the Block After, you know, nobody's done that except us, so I think we should kind of recognize that. And like I said, maybe I haven't said it yet, I speak really for every permanent resident on East Fair who is kind of frustrated, again, with the strategies, and hopefully, or, you know, we hope that Public Works takes, you know, seriously, you know, alternatives, maybe experimenting with different, different things to try to, you know, respect the rights of people during the winter and not give priority to motor vehicles. So, that's it. Thanks.
Anyone else for public comment this evening?
My name is Emily Rake, and I'm a student at Northern, and I originally came here because I was just planning on documenting this meeting for an assignment, but I realized I did have something I want to say. I noticed on the corner of, I believe it's Third Street and Washington, recently, a bench was removed, and me and some of my, I do work at the Jansen House, and I do notice that a lot of homeless people do, would use that bench to kind of park and lay out their stuff and, and just sit, and I wanted to prompt, prompt if this bench can't be replaced, some other spot for them to be able to, you know, rest, put their stuff down, because they're members of this community too, and I don't think they should be ignored. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay, seeing none. Public comment is now closed. All right. Commissioners, that brings us to our consent agenda. Do we have any motions on consent? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
All right. Do we have a second on that motion? Mayor Protam Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Mayor Protam Davis?
Nothing.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, and that brings us to our only unfinished business item, which is Ordinance 702, authorized city officials, which will recall, which will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, if you could give us the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. For decades, the city of Marquette has utilized a municipal ordinance violations bureau to process municipal civil infraction violation notices pursuant to state law, MCL 600.8707. The law stipulates that these violation notices can be issued by authorized local officials. The attached ordinance would amend Chapter 30, Article II of the Marquette City Code in order to clarify and expand the list of city officials authorized to issue municipal civil infraction citations and violation notices, remove sections of the article that reference the fine amounts for civil infractions as these fines are set via the annual city fee schedule, and remove sections of the article that are redundant with state law. Also attached is a version of Article II with the recommended changes reflected, as well as a clean copy of Article II with the changes incorporated. Per city charter, this ordinance cannot be adopted at the meeting in which it is introduced. The first read of this ordinance occurred at the commission's March 13th meeting. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, adopt Ordinance 702, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Hanley?
I move that we adopt Ordinance 702.
Okay. Do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Larson?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Hanley, any comment?
Nope.
Commissioner Larson?
Come.
Anything else from the commission? Okay. City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Otteway?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was feather gathering here. Yes.
Mayor Protam Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Mayor.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. All right, and that brings us to our last business item of the evening, which is solids handling project bid, which is also a roll call vote. City Clerk, if you could again give us the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Marquette, in cooperation with the Marquette Area Wastewater Advisory, Wastewater Treatment Advisory Board, has planned capital improvements for the Marquette Area Wastewater Facility with the following goals: Providing septic and high-strength waste-receiving services; Leverage existing assets to produce additional biogas; Utilize the biogas and existing engine generators to produce renewable energy in the form of electricity and heat; Improve reliability and redundancy of biosolids processing to support water quality objectives and national pollution discharge-elimination system compliance; Eagle requires 180 days of onsite solid storage; And address additional system needs including effluent DO compliance, vector debris handling, and decant pump station deficiencies. Donahue and Associates developed a project plan for the wastewater treatment plant improvements and other projects in 2018 as a mechanism to facilitate funding through the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Funding Program. The project was designed and bid in 2021. Due to high costs and the potential for additional funding, though, the project was repackaged and rebid in 2023. Rebidding the project resulted in the city receiving $5,857,500 in grant funding and securing a 20-year loan with a 1.875% interest rate. Bids for the project were opened on February 16th, 2023. The city received one bid from Myron Construction that exceeded the city's budget by $2 million, approximately 30%. At the MAU TAB meeting held on March 14th, 2023, the advisory board agreed unanimously to award the project to Myron Construction with the inclusions of Alternative 1, the HUBER septic-receiving screen, and Alternate 5 needed improvements to address regulatory and safety issues. To reduce the impact of the higher bid, the board also approved using $1,380,000 from the facilities reserve fund, leaving a balance of $534,456. The remainder of the cost will be added to the CWSRF loan. Fiscal effect: The total estimated project costs, including design, services during construction, construction and bonding, are $14,064,000, with $6,826,000 borrowed through the CWSRF program to fund the project. The remaining costs are funded with $5,857,500 in grant funds and $1,380,000 in reserve funds. Recommendation: Accept the bid from Myron Construction with the recommended alternatives in the amount of $12,758,234, as well as the grant funding in the amount of $5,857,500. Authorize the remainder of the project funding through $1,380,000 from the facilities reserve fund and a CWSRF loan, and authorize the city manager or her designee to sign the resolution. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to accept the bid from Myron Construction with the recommended alternatives in the amount of $12,758,234, as well as the grant funding in the amount of $5,857,500. Authorize the remainder of the project funding through a $1,380,000 from the facilities reserve fund and a CWSRF loan, and authorize the city manager or her designee to sign the resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. And do we have a second on this motion? Commissioner Otteway?
Second.
Thank you. And I'm going to throw it over to Commissioner Stonehouse here, to the commission, we do have staff available for answering any questions we have on this item, but Commissioner Stonehouse, the floor is yours.
I would only indicate, Your Honor, it looks like we don't have a lot of choice in the matter, as we are directed by the state of Michigan to go ahead and do what we just did. We can argue about whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, but at the end of the day, it is a requirement that we meet, and this seems to be the most expeditious way to do so. We do have the experts here, as you indicated, and I think that they could shed better light on it than I just did.
Commissioner Otteway?
Just adding on to Commissioner Stonehouse, I would really love to hear from our experts since they're here.
All right, thanks for having us. I promise this will be the last time I talk about biosolids. I have Alan Williams here, he is our design engineer from Donahue and Associates, so I'm going to let him give you a quick update on the needs, why we need this project, and then we're here to answer any questions.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for your time today. There's really two major components to this project. The biggest one was alluded to. The city is required to have 180 days of biosolid storage at the wastewater treatment facility. They are quite short of that today. In addition to that, there are some capacity issues related to the biosolids and being able to produce the biosolids that need to be disposed and stored, and that is also a major component of this project. And then the other aspect is providing septic and high-strength waste-receiving services at the wastewater plant. That will provide some additional revenue to the city. That waste that's received will be handled with existing assets to produce additional biogas and produce electricity onsite using the combined heat and power units that have been in place for a few years. And the project also addresses some other deficiencies, including effluent DO compliance with the state and vector debris handling and decant pump station improvements. I'd be glad to take any questions.
Commissioner Otteway?
Yeah, I think it would be great to hear just some clarification on this, especially for people that may be in attendance, new to this, newer commissioners. Obviously, we're not in compliance now from that standpoint, so what are we doing now? And how long have we not been in compliance, and how were we taking care of that before?
Basically, we haven't been in compliance since we upgraded the plan in 2008. What we've been doing since that time, once we fill up our cake storage area, so we have two ways of getting rid of biosolids. We can create a cake by passing the liquid biosolids through a machine and storing that material. Once that is full, we're dependent on two liquid storage tanks. What we like to do is fill one liquid storage tank up, and then slowly, over time, let that settle out, and then we skim that back and bring it back through the treatment plant. Once the cake storage area is full, we no longer really have that ability to do that. We have to make room, because every day we're transferring anywhere from 18,000 to 20,000 gallons of material into these tanks, and it creates a lot of, you know, it's difficult to treat, it's a big strain on the treatment facility. So that's where this project was started. We knew about the problem, we've tried to manage it, and this is finally a step to take care of the problem, along with some of the other deficiencies that we have.
How many do we have in storage currently?
We have about 140. I think it was 141 is what we came up with. So we filled up our cake storage area about three or four weeks ago, and we're not going to be able to get on the farmer's fields until everything gets melted and dried, so it'll probably be sometime in May, so now is the time where we struggle. And it has caused us permit violations in the past. We've gotten pretty good at managing it, so we've lowered the permit violations that we used to have, but we still do have them.
And how much do we get?
Well, the permit violations don't cost anything until the state forces us to address the issue. Right. Yes. Yep.
This is one of those things that is never fun to spend this kind of money on something that the public or we can't look at and say, wow, wasn't that beautiful? It's something that we tend to not want to think about, but I, as Commissioner Stonehouse pointed out, I know that it's a requirement, and I just wanted to congratulate the staff and thank them for some of the, I don't know if you call it, just the planning that has gone into this, the thoughts about increasing revenue in part of this, and just waiting and finding the ability to have some of our loan forgiveness that we have. And, you know, without those kinds of things happening, we would be spending a whole lot more money on something that we don't get to sit back and say, oh, how wonderful that is.
Right, yeah, we've been talking about this project for a long time, including back when former director Kurt Goodman was the director. So it's something that, operationally, it's really challenging for us, so we've always wanted to get to the point where we could do an engineered fix, and that's what this project will do.
And it sounds like this is the right time to do it, so thank you.
With the grant funding, yes.
Anything else from the commission?
Well, just want to thank you both for coming and speaking for us tonight, and I do think it's, again, kind of how Mayor Protam Davis said, it's not necessarily one of those things that gets a lot of fanfare, but it's a critical and expected service that we provide residents to be able to handle this, and the fact it's going to help us get in compliance, as well as just the amount of efficiency and it's going to come with it is great, and thank you for putting the amount of time and effort you did into it.
Thank you.
All right. Before I ask, Commissioners, do we have any more discussion or comment on the item? All right. City Clerk, if we could get a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Otteway?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Mayor.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. All right, and that brings us to our second and final public comment session of the evening. All right, and that brings us to our second and final public comment session of the evening. Again, public comment may not exceed three minutes per person, and please clearly state your name and physical address prior to your comment.
Margaret Brum, you don't know how much I wanted to get up here the first time and say, please vote for the new project at the wastewater plant. I didn't feel it was my place to say it, I used to be on the wastewater board and there, I didn't want the slightest issue of a conflict of interest. But what you've done today for the City of Marquette and the future of Marquette is you put your money where your mouth is in developing a sustainable, state-of-the-art wastewater facility. I wish there was some way you could praise this as much as you praise other more visible things, artwork and the stuff, because having a state-of-the-art wastewater facility is a sign of a vibrant, living, breathing city that is planning for now and the future. And as much as I enjoyed my time on the wastewater board, I never had any trouble explaining to people why you wanted to invest in wastewater and why it was always so difficult to get people's attention. But I'll, I'll go back to when I was at Michigan Tech and I learned sewage treatment in a conservation class, and the gentleman who taught us to us started by saying, you're going to be dealing with sewage treatment the rest of your life because it doesn't go away and nobody wants to talk about it, or God forbid, pay for it. And I thought, you know, I was very young and I knew everything, and I thought, oh, he's exaggerating. He's not. Every time a city gets into trouble with their water system and they delve into it, it started with the sewage system not being upgraded, and then the water system not being upgraded, and then places unfortunately like Jackson, Mississippi and Benton Harbor go into crisis mode, where the taxpayers have to dig deep for these massive emergency fixes. So I'm applauding what you've done today in a time of great challenges to the City of Marquette. This is an indicator to anybody investing in this town, that you've invested in the future of the wastewater treatment plant, and this is something they can take for granted. Whereas there are many spots in Michigan and in the rest of the United States, they're not just in not in compliance for one thing, they're not in compliance for a whole bunch of stuff. And in this particular case, you've taken that argument off the table, and I would encourage you, whenever you get new people in Marquette, to, you know, give them a free tour of the wastewater plant, as opposed to the free tours they give now. But it is a privilege to be here finally when you got the approval, because I sat at a lot of meetings where it was on the table. That's it. I just wanted to say, as much as nobody wants to spend the money, this is a signal to the future that you're worried about the future and you're investing in it now, and you've done good, and I'm very much appreciative of it. Hey, I'm perfectly willing to say when I disagree, but when you've done good, you've done good for the future of Marquette. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment this evening? Anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing none, public comment is now closed. Brings us two comments from the commission. Going to start things off with Commissioner Hanley.
Thank you. I don't have much tonight. I do want to comment on the bench, though. It was just moved across the street and a few buildings down. The pay station has to be moved to the location where the bench was during construction, but I do believe the plans are to move it back when that is done. Other than that, I hope everyone enjoys the beautiful weather while we have it.
Commissioner Larson?
No comment.
Okay. Commissioner Otteaway?
Once again, enjoy the beautiful weather. I mean, say that louder. As many people know, I like to sit around town and work from my car, and I see people out and about, walking, and it's just, Marquette's becoming vibrant again, and it's, it's beautiful to see. With that, I will say, you know, Saturday is Angry Bear. I really hope everyone gets a chance to get out and enjoy that festival. Friday's Baby Bear, too, yes. I mean, so many things going on. One other thing with, with the beautiful weather, I just want to remind people in the public, as much as we all really want to do something about having a dog park at the beach, I mean, we all have pets, I have a dog, I am starting to see a lot of dogs on the beach, people walking right past the signs that say no dogs on the beach. It's very difficult, you know, for, for our city officials to enforce that, obviously, but we don't do that to be mean, it's just one of those things where you have kids swimming and playing, and other people in the public swimming and playing. We want to make sure that they're not necessarily doing it in, in dog waste, so just please keep an eye out and, and look to see if you're, you're in compliance and look to see if you're walking right past a sign. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Davis?
Thank you. A big thank you to Iris Caters for coming and talking about our 175th anniversary coming up. I think I, as well as some of the other commissioners, were unaware of that, and maybe we'll be having some conversations about what we can do about that and at least opening up the time capsule. Barb, thank you for keeping your sidewalks clear. And I know, I've, I've walked that and I've seen how hard ice pack that is. So thank you to you and to Lou and to Mike and to Kevin and to John for, for working so hard to keep that clean. And Emily, thank you for, for your comment. You know, it's people like you that are working to help very vulnerable people and, and keep an eye on what good things that our city can and cannot, you know, be able to manage for the group. And as Commissioner Hanley said, I think that bench is going to get moved back in the, in the future when some construction is completed, but I appreciate that you took the time to comment on it. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Only one comment, Your Honor. It was interesting to hear the comments regarding the time capsule of 25 years. Last couple months, I've been cleaning the basement. 25 years in the basement is just the beginning of the, of the digging. It's not until you pull out a little two-by-two-inch slide and realize it was shot in 1965, and you've still got these things. So maybe we need to readjust 25 years to be closer to maybe 50 years, maybe 75 years, let's push it out as far as we can, guys. But 25 is, is a little bit light, but I do certainly give them every enthusiasm to go ahead and see what they can do. Anytime we can have a party, it's a, it's a good thing to pursue. That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I too thought the time capsule of 25 years seemed a little light, and then I, I remembered, I'm only 25 years old, so I was certainly not aware of that anniversary coming up, but I guess that makes sense. Only other thing I really wanted to say tonight is, again, thank you to our staff for the project that we approved tonight. I, I think Ms. Brum's comments were probably the best quote I could possibly ask for on that subject, so just keep that in mind. But with that, the time is 6:33, actually, yep, I almost forgot, I'm sorry. I'm going to pass this over to our city manager here for her comments.
All I, all I want to do is wish the City of Ishmung a happy anniversary. It is their 150th anniversary of their charter, so I know that they would be here if they were not celebrating themselves. And then, just a quick reminder, the community office hours is this Wednesday, April 12, from 10 to noon at the Peter Wright Public Library. Please come on in and, and have a cup of coffee and talk about any of the various things. We've had a great mixture of, of some, you know, awareness for issues, and also some, some real nice, kind words about our city staff, so please feel free to swing by, 10 to noon on the 12th. Thank you.
Okay, now, apologies. At the time at 6:35, am I adjourned this meeting?